Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
The allegiance to the by of the United States of America and through the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
President.
Councilmember Brian Erdialis.
Here.
Doug Sasso.
Here.
John Kaper.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
First item on our agenda is public comment or audience participation for items not listed on our agenda. Anybody in the audience wish to address council or? Moving in.
At this time, there are no attendees in the Zoom meeting.
Okay. Next item is approval of the minutes for the February 16th, 2021 council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the February 16th minutes was included in your packets and is presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes and find any changes, corrections? Clint? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to approve the minutes from the month of March.
I mean, month of February, February 16th, as a matter of fact. Give me a second.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item is recognition of business of the month for March. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. The honoree for this month was unable to make it to the meeting, but the business of the month for March is Top Door. They're located at 629 Commerce Avenue. If you've ever had trouble with a garage door, you're probably familiar with them. I know I have. They're kind of the go-to company in town for that. It's a family-owned business owned by Eric Stark, James Stark, and Valerie Stark for the past seven years. They moved from their old location near the high school to an existing building at Sherman and Commerce and put up a large new building there. And while we're all familiar with them as being the rescuers of broken garage doors here in town, their business is mainly commercial, I discovered when I talked to them about this recognition. They do a lot of farm and ranch customers, dairy, big commercial customers across Colorado, Wyoming, Nebraska, and Kansas. So they're a great company to have here locally, and they're our business of the month.
Well, congratulations to them, and they are a long-term business. I know Bob Fisher initially owned it.
Yeah, and I'll get the sandwich board sign and the plaque and everything to them later this week.
Next is a presentation on approving an agreement for legal services with Wilson Williams LLP. Our illustrious attorney firm has been. Nina and Jeff have started their own business and left the previous company that they worked for. We've worked exclusively, or we have been exclusively tended to by Nina and Jeff since we went with a contract attorney firm. And they have both branched off and started their own services and are taking care of the municipalities that they've done for that firm. I think they've done us a very impeccable job. The staff have had no complaints working with them. They've been very receptive to council's needs and keeping us on the straight and narrow, out of trouble. So. With that, I would entertain a resolution approving the agreement for our legal services with their new firm.
I'd offer a resolution approving an agreement for legal services with Wilson and Williams LLP.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Brian Erdialis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, members of council.
Welcome aboard again.
Yeah. Love being here. Hope this new firm gives us a little better service than the old one. We'll work on that. I'm really going to get after it now.
Next is a presentation on bids for a mini ITX slash mini STS computers. Mr. McCoy.
The wizard has come out.
The wizard is trying out my bird.
How do we get that back in?
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. We put out a bid on, we put out a bid for computers, new computers. We do this every other year. So the average lifespan of a computer in the city of Fort Morgan is about four years. We got four bids back, and we're recommending that the city go with bite speed, even though I know they weren't the lowest. And, you know, we went with lowest last time around, and we've been kind of paying for it ever since, to my shame. We've, out of the 65 computers that we purchased that year, we bought, or we've replaced fans in about 25 of them. You know what, $5 a pop, that's not bad, but you consider downtime, and that takes us away from time when we can be doing other things. So we'd like to go back to bite speed, if at all possible. They've been very good to us. Their support is very good to us, and, you know, when I call and say there's a, one of the machines has a bad hard drive, you know, they believe me. So they don't try to fight me on it. They know that I've been doing this a long time, so. Any questions?
Are they within your budget, what you have budgeted?
They are, they are. The nice thing about them is they give us the parts closet, whereas with most manufacturers, we have to call and get a replacement hard drive on the way. With the parts closet, they give us a bunch of spare parts, and then if a hard drive goes out, we pull from the parts cabinet or parts box, whatever. We pull from that, and then we have, you know, we can have you up and running in about, you know, a couple hours, you know, depending on the problem. You know, rather than waiting a few days to get replacement parts. All about avoiding downtime.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions for Nelson? I wouldn't know what questions to ask, so.
Okay.
You're safe for me. Seeing none, I'd entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from Bite Speed for $39,750.
Second.
Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Nelson.
Thanks, guys.
Next is presentation on bids for a tractor with enclosed cab and rotary brush mower for the Parks Department. Mr. Petrino, Mr. Duke.
Good evening. I'm just here to introduce Travis Petrino. He's a Parks and Cemetery mechanic, has been for about 20 years. Travis is over all of our equipment at the Parks and Cemetery, and so we're turning over all the bidding and procurement of equipment to Travis, so I'll let him discuss the bid with you now. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In 2020, the Parks Department budgeted $64,000 to replace a 1995 tractor in a six-foot Bush Hog with a larger tractor and a larger Bush Hog. We received four total bids, two being local vendors. The bid was put out on the website February 5th, and the bid opening was held February 22nd. Staff is requesting your approval to accept a low bid in the amount of $62,000 from Wickham Tractor Company for a new 2021 Kubota Model M7060 HTC 12 tractor with a Kubota LA 1154A loader and a Land Pride RC 2512 rotary cutter. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to say I appreciate being able to see the equipment. It's been useful to see what we're talking about, so thank you, and.
Always nice to see two local bidders. Anybody have any questions for Travis? Ain't none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid of $62,000 from Wickham Tractor Company for Kubota tractor and loader and rotary cutter.
I'll second.
Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Brian Erdialis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is presentation on bids for furniture for the fieldhouse. Mr. Sampson, Mr. Hayman. Doesn't look like exercise stuff.
Good evening, council. So we went out to bid for furniture equipment. This is going to be furniture to, for the fieldhouse, including furniture in the vestibule, lobby, front desk, reception area, office area, conference room, and in the locker area as well. I've included in the packet a layout of an example. We received bids from three vendors. We had a pre-bid meeting where we asked bidders to come in so we could specifically talk about the bid. With those three, those three bidders, you'll see option one and option two. Essentially, option one is following fairly specific the bid as outlined from our architects when they did the initial FFNE review. All three bidders followed that, and then we asked them to give us an option where they showed a little bit more of their creativity to see what different options we could get out of that as well. So that is option two for each of those bidders. Our lowest bidder came Office Capes, they're out of Fort Collins. Their bids came, their bid two came at $39,147.91. We really liked what they had to offer there and their experience that they've had with recreation centers. They've worked in recreation centers all throughout the region, including Eaton, Windsor, and Greeley. So they had a lot of good experience detailed by that. So with that, staff's recommendation is to purchase the bid for the second option. We felt it was, it's in budget, and with it being the lowest bidder, we felt it was appropriate for a total of $45,000. That gives us a small contingency for different options. We saw that there are different little options we could add into our furniture bid to help make things ideal for furniture. Are there any questions?
Once you get to the $45,000, I see Furniture Mart being at option two at 46. We're talking local versus Fort Collins?
That's true.
I guess I would question that, and I don't have any information on what Furniture Mart option was. When I see you want to go with 45 or $1,000 off to a local business, so.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be, though, then if they still wanted the extra options or the wiggle room and stuff like that? I mean, between the base bid, you're not really talking $1,000, you're talking $7,000. If they still wanted the extra wiggle room, I mean, he's going from 39 to 45 for extra wiggle room when putting stuff in. So I would assume they'd still want the same wiggle room if we went with Furniture Mart. So that still makes the $7,000 difference. So just make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
I'm fine with that.
That is correct, yes. And just for reference as well, with Furniture Mart, we were happy with their bids as well. Their second option was comparable. We, Ty and I reviewing the differences, we enjoy, we enjoyed both bids. Both are acceptable in needs or for our needs. We just, we preferred Office Capes outline their creativity a little bit more.
What's the difference in major difference in what you're requesting with Furniture Mart?
In the option two, the biggest difference where we saw creativity from all three bidders was the outlay of the lobby and how they approached the lobby with different furnitures and arrangements. So for example, with Office Capes, there was a mix of different forms of seating between table, curvature, vinyl. They kept in mind space for things like a foosball table, things like that. Furniture Mart, they went more with a dog bone design for its furniture. So we saw a little bit more variety in the seating arrangements in the lobby for Office Capes versus Furniture Mart. That was one of the big differences. There's some other minor differences as well, such as office. For example, the fourplex with Office Capes has all the workers facing out to the north, whereas the Furniture Mart one has them all facing inward. There's minor things.
If I might.
Yeah, go ahead.
We did, you know, much appreciation to Josh and Furniture Mart. We had a nice sit-down with them, looked at all their stuff. I think comparable durability-wise, all very similar, right? This is commercial grade. We kind of gave them specific instructions to start at the mid-range, commercial-grade type furniture, and that was option one, and then to spice it up in option two. All three companies bid very similar stuff, same type of benches, same type of vinyl fabric that is very easy to clean, very durable, very long-lasting. Creativity-wise, maybe we saw a little bit more with the other companies, but I don't think that's something that would hold us back with Josh. We can work with him and come up with some of those aspects. So it's really how you guys feel, if you want to stay within, you know, local. I think we're perfectly happy to do that also. And I think we'd get great products from Josh as well, either way.
What you had said, some additional options to go up to the 45, what options or changes, what would?
I got it.
What constitutes that?
Just wanted to build in a little contingency in case something changes and we were over that mark, that initial bid mark. I think even within their price point, there's options already to pick from, right? Colors, fabrics, different things. So the contingency was just, just in case. I wouldn't really anticipate even going into too much of it.
I have a question. If the furniture is about the same, can't you arrange it the way you want to?
Right, and I think as the process moved on with whatever company we selected, I think we'd be having those conversations, right? We might be able to change the cubicle arrangement or the height of a table, those type of things. And so, yes, I think you're correct. There'd be some adjustments that could be made and some changes that could happen from one table to the next. We've got a proposal from all these companies, we have suggestions of items, and then we're kind of built off of that. I hope I'm explaining that correctly.
They could pull an idea from one and get the same effect with the.
In essence, you could, and that would probably happen, yeah.
What is our budget on that exactly?
We were initially thinking that this would come in from $30,000 to $50,000, so pretty close.
So option two on Office Capes, $39,147. You asked for 45, $6,000 more, roughly, changes. So at $39,000, you're not getting what you want?
No, we are. There's, there's. In case there's additional changes, we saw things we don't. So for example, outlets on desks, things like that, instead of having to plug underneath, there'd be an outlet on the table, other potential options we haven't thought of yet.
Me, I'm local. I mean, with the state of where we're at.
And the rea, yeah, sorry.
It's been support our local businesses and that. I, that's kind of the way I lean to it. We talked about supporting our local businesses, boosting our downtown business district, and I think that from my perspective only, I'm in favor of staying with a local business.
I guess, kind of like I mentioned, I think Josh will be great to work with on this stuff, and there will be advantages to having him local. I mean, he's already offered to order samples of chairs to sit in, different things like that. There are some, I think we'll be happy either way. It's really kind of up to you guys if you want to focus on the low bid and keep it at that $40,000 range or jump up a little bit to be in the local.
Thing about it, that $7,000, when you compare it to this total budget for the fieldhouse, is not very significant.
True, yes.
Well, I know even when we picked GM Pips, one of the things that we really liked with them is they utilized local contractors. There was a local guy that was part of the crew they had. You know, I'm, I'm stuck with, I'm going to vote for staying with Furniture Mart.
And I can definitely confirm that the budget would allow for that.
So if the budget was $50,000, could we put a proof for $50,000? That gives us a little contingency, they can go to option two, which is 46,164. There's wiggle room there if they need to upgrade.
Sure, and that's a lot of wiggle room.
Furniture's not cheap anymore.
No, I'm talking about the wiggle room.
Oh, okay.
I'm not talking about the bid, I'm talking about the wiggle room.
Like Steve was saying, there are some options on certain pieces. A lot of it has to do with power. Cubicles, music, by little tabletop power stations, cell phones, whatever, even the furniture you can have wired. So there's a lot of little options that will need to be decided as.
I think we've put a lot of money into this project. I want to see it look nice. I want this to be first class, so whatever money you need, make it happen.
We'll get some sales tax money back.
Yeah.
No?
We don't, we don't.
Oh, okay. Okay.
But.
But.
Nice try.
I think it'd be fun to have. Either way.
Well, Josh is here. You, what they're talking about, the electrical additions are part included in there.
Yes, we can add some of those electrical additions to there, and I'm sure we can work together to, really, our plan to look a little more like some of the other plans. And to be fair, that is very true. I'm not as experienced with some of the other ones, but I think we can work together to make it work.
And I think it'll kind of be special.
So you can get all the furniture and amenities that they would need to meet their needs?
I gave them some drawings of what we were thinking to do, and I think if we mix some of the plans together, we can make it work just as well.
You guys good with that, or?
Yeah, yeah, and like Ty was saying earlier, yeah, we were able to work with. We're just keeping in consideration, we traditionally go with the lowest bid if it meets our needs.
I've stated my point of view, I guess, so.
I started this.
You did, thank you.
So Jeff, if we was to approve this, we'd approve that option two for Furniture Mart not to exceed $50,000?
That would be fair.
Would that be fair?
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be a good number.
Yeah.
And I think you'd just change your resolution to Furniture Mart option.
Furniture Mart for 50.
Okay.
Furniture Mart option two is what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a resolution unless somebody has additional comments.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from Furniture Mart for option two for $46,164.12 with contingency raising the total bid to $50,000.
Have a resolution from Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdialis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Josh. Next is a presentation on bids for East Beaver Avenue Extension Project. Mr. Nation.
I can't wait for that, I can go clear down.
Good evening. I'm not going to ask for contingencies, so we'll make this easy. This is a project that we actually looked at doing last year, but because of COVID, we kind of pulled it off the books. It was an easy one to hold back on the expenditure, knowing where tax revenues and things were going to come in at. As the winter rolled along, we decided that we'd go ahead and move it up since the tax numbers were there. This will require a rollover amount to come out of the budget from last year to cover the expense, but it's the extension of Beaver Avenue that comes out of the industrial park. I think for a lot of years, people, most people that haven't been to the industrial park didn't realize that Beaver just dead, had a dead end in the middle of it, but it was always anticipated that road coming back out to Beaver and extending into town. Now that the city owns the Phoebeck Farm, it allows us to do that, and due to some potential business inquiries into the Phoebeck Farm, it's time to go ahead and get that road extended through there. We put utilities in there last year, and this will cause the road to be extended then from right there by DFA and La Prino, then over to Barlow Road, and that'll be a stop sign, keeping traffic controlled out onto Barlow. So we went out to bid, actually fairly surprised, we had seven companies bid on this job. In my mind, it seems like it's kind of a small road project, but it does have, you know, curb and gutter, concrete work and dirt work and everything. So seven bids came back, ranged anywhere from a little over a million to a little under $700,000. The low bidder on this is RME Limited LLC Doing Businesses Elite Surface Infrastructure. This is a company we're not familiar with in Fort Morgan. This is not a company we've done business with, but we did a lot of checking into their references and got nothing but glowing recommendations from the municipalities that use them down in the southern Denver area. And so that was where they're kind of, they've been doing a lot of work out of the Castle Rock area and then to that south Denver area. So came highly recommended, so we didn't see any reason internally not to go ahead and just do the contract with them. And so, so that's, I'm here tonight, I'm asking for council to approve the bid from REM Doing Businesses Elite Surface Infrastructure in an amount not to exceed $686,321.20 to complete the East Beaver Avenue Extension Project.
Is this going to go, this will go all the way in and connect into our existing industrial park?
Yes, and it's, it's just from Barlow to the existing industrial park. There'll still be a gap from Barlow back to the fieldhouse that will need to be, the design will need to be finished on that one and put into a budget at some point.
That should eliminate a lot of truck traffic off the platform.
Yes.
So it'll go Beaver straight down to Barlow Road, and then it can go Barlow Road to 34.
Yeah.
So is this going to be designed to accommodate the heavy milk trucks?
Yes, yep, it has the same asphalt design as the industrial park itself does.
What about that intersection?
It'll be a stop sign for now, as traffic flows change. As traffic flows change, we'll see if there needs to be any type of change. We will have to look at doing a probably, where Barlow will change to a center turn lane into that street, and traffic will go around that dedicated lane, and so.
I guess as long as it's truck friendly, because that's what's going to be used in that mostly.
Yep, it'll have a, it'll have a similar look to the entrance coming out onto 34. So it will have a center island put into it, and we're looking at standardizing the signs that go into the industrial park. So we'll end up putting a new industrial park sign at this entrance, along with possibly updating the one at the other entrance.
I mean, that, years of doing traffic accidents here, it was always a, one of major complaints that we're really not truck friendly.
Yeah.
And we got nothing but trucks here, especially right there.
Yeah, yep.
I would recommend you yield to a full milk truck.
There we go.
Are, are you saying, Doug, we should look at adding some roundabouts?
No roundabout, no roundabout. What's your timeline on completion?
I would have to go back and look. It's sometime this, later this summer.
Oh.
Yeah, we didn't give them a tight turnaround on it. We just, we got it out the bid early and, and we'll just give them, since there's no traffic on it right now, there's not a big push for it. No.
He said no contingency.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Brett? Saying none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution that we accept the bid from R E M E Limited LLC Doing Businesses as Elite Surface Infrastructure in the amount not to exceed $686,321.20 to complete the East Beaver Extension Construction Project.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson, both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brett. Next is a presentation accepting a grant from the Colorado Airport Board for airfield pavement maintenance for our municipal airport.
There we go, okay. What you have in your packet tonight is a, it's a simple resolution from C.DOT Aeronautics. The runway is due for a pavement surface treatment, basically, to the tune of about $250,000. We've been awarded the grant, but we have to have this paperwork that's submitted that basically says you guys are okay with the mayor signing the grant and moving all that stuff forward. And then once we have all that in place, our engineers will go ahead and finalize the bid documents, and then we'll go out to bid on it and, and get that project taken care of. And so the, the money's reflected, the money for the projects and the budget and everything. This was something anticipated. This is just the paperwork side of it, so just looking through this resolution, approval on this resolution, so I can get the mayor's signature on things. This is one of those electronic ones that you have to work with.
Wonderful. Okay, any questions? Would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution that we accept the grant from Colorado Aeronautical Board for Airfield Pavement Maintenance at Fort Morgan Municipal Airport.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson, both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brett.
Thanks, Brett.
Next is a presentation on approval of adoption of the 2022 calendar budget. Glenn Meyer.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. What you guys have in your packet tonight is the 2022 Budget Calendar. It's hard to believe we're talking budget calendar already. Seems like we just finished the 2021 budget. So here we are. You have the calendar in front of you. I won't bore you with the details, but I will just highlight that we're kind of moving things up a little this year, getting them done a little quicker, if you will. There's some reasons for that. We'll talk about that at some point, but we've also added the Employee Pay Adjustment Salary Survey, or, or at least talking about salaries very early in the process. That's something we've not done before, at least not in my tenure here. It seemed, I always questioned that when I was going through my own budget, was waiting to the end to do salaries when it's 70% of most of your funds. It's one of the largest expenses you have, so I wanted to tackle that early. That, that comes to you, at least a conversation about that on May the 4th, one of the very first things we'll do. And then again, just highlighting that we've kind of moved everything up, and we're really presenting the formal budget to you on October the 5th, as opposed to either the second meeting in October or early November. That gets us done earlier, and that way we can plan our projects a little quicker into the, end of the year, as the first of the year comes around, and get those bids out earlier. As you know, as we bid things out earlier, we get better prices, so helps in a lot of ways, but the calendar is there for your, for any questions you might have, and then for adoption tonight.
If we don't approve this, does that mean we don't have to sit through budget presentations?
Uh, no, we're still going to do those anyway. You just, you know.
All right. Worth a shot.
Yeah, we'll just do, we'll just, you know, we just stretch those meetings out much longer if you don't, and I know Clint, really.
That is a true passion of mine.
Yes.
Any questions on the calendar as it's presented? If none, I'd entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to approve and adopt the 2022 Budget Calendar as presented to council.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson, both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item is reports by officials and staff.
Well, I have a few things. Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I guess first of all, just thank you all for embarrassing me with these fine items tonight. Today is my 50th birthday. Somebody said you only turn 50 once. I said, yeah, but you only turned 49 once, too. Why did we not make a big deal about that one? No, I appreciate.
You only turned 49 once.
Yeah.
I did it about five or six years.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate it. It's, it's, I'm honored to have great staff and, and you all to celebrate my 50th tonight. I'm glad we have a shorter meeting, but it, it's been fun today. My staff destroyed my office with various decorations and things and, and provided some nice gifts, and, and it's just nice to be, to be recognized, so thank you very much. I appreciate that. After the meeting, please, anybody that would like, there's cake, and I'm happy to share that, so. Just a few quick things, council tour dates. I want to bring this to your attention again, because it's a bit odd that we would have council tours this year, but some of you have asked for that. We missed them last year because of COVID, and so we wanted to give those council members that are, that are new or haven't had a chance to go on those tours, the opportunity to do that this year. So the first one is actually, starts next meeting, and we'll be out to the water treatment plant. And just a reminder that we actually hold the meeting out at the plant, so that's also for anybody attending the meeting tonight paying attention on YouTube. We'll be out to the water treatment plant. If you want to attend that meeting, you can come out there. And then the rest of the dates are on the calendar. I'll highlight the fieldhouses on here. We should have pretty much finished a, a lot of the interior facility by the date that we'll be at the, at the fieldhouse. And then also, the last meeting on July the 6th is, we also hold that meeting at the golf course. So we're pretty excited to offer the tours this year, and we'll work out the logistics. John will probably reach out to you at some point, and if you need help getting to and from, we can do that, but we typically, we just meet here at 4:45, and then if we, if we need to give you a ride, we can sure do that. We'll have some folks in vehicles, but. Oh, 4:15, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, half hour off in the calendar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's old age.
I'm 50, I can't read.
It's old age.
Yeah, it's, my eyesight's going clearly. Yeah, 4:15. We'll meet here at, at City Hall and then go from here to those various locations, so. And also just reminder that the retreat is coming up, March 20th, that's a Saturday. We'll plan to meet at the Gene Doty Senior Center at 9 o'clock for council, attorney, Lauren and myself, and then the rest of the staff will join us at 10. And then we have a full day planned, a lot of work to be done that day. We'll be on point. I'll keep everybody on task. We'll provide you a nice lunch, snacks. Breaks is needed, but we've got a lot of work to accomplish that day. It's, it's going to be a good day. It's going to be a bit of a long day, but I appreciate you giving up your Saturday and, and spending it with us to go through a lot of items that we need some direction on and, and budgets for 2022 and beyond, so. Questions about that one? All right. Ty informs me that the golf course is going to be opening soon, and what he's, what he says is that the first, first official day for handicaps is March 15th. That probably means something to you golfers. I mean, I'm handicapped every time I golf, but I don't know, that's something else, I think, to golfers, but first official day for handicaps is March 15th, but they're going to be turning the sprinkler system on and greening things up, up there in the next few days, so look for, look for a lot of green grass up at the golf course, so. Anybody else have anything in the bag? No? Yeah, the golf course is open, but it's going to be open for like, you know, official, whatever, play. Yeah. Yeah.
Officially, open. In, in the police department, just so you know, we did get that building started last week. They finally got it started, and it's mostly completed structurally. Coming back to still do the electrical and the concrete and some of that, but if you get a chance to come see, you'll see that evidence building in the back lot there, so moving along. Thanks to Steve and his crew as well with the electric department and everybody else helping us on that, it's been helpful.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Well, happy birthday, and it wasn't all of us that embarrassed you, but.
Right.
Well deserved.
Yeah.
Mine doesn't squeak.
There you go.
I won't tell who told me to embarrass.
Yeah, I already know.
Because no one is not here.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is accepting sealed bids for the purchase of 20-inch water mainline materials until 3:00 PM on March 3rd, annual integrated mosquito control services until 3:00 PM on March 8th, upfitting a police patrol vehicle until 3:00 PM on March 10th, 2021 wastewater collection system relining projects until 3:00 PM on March 19th, a tandem axle refuse truck until 3:00 PM on March 24th, and a Pacmore HLR refuse unit to go on that truck until 3:00 PM on March 24th, 2021 HBP paving and surface treatment projects until 3:00 PM on March 29th, 2021 on-call HBP paving services until 3:00 PM on March 29th, trash removal services until 3:00 PM on March 30th, and roof replacement project at the police department until 3:00 PM on March 30th, and the historic city hall window project until 3:00 PM on April 1st. Under meetings, the senior center advisory board is scheduled to meet on March 9th at 1:30 PM at the Gene Doty Senior Center. The historic preservation board is scheduled to have its quarterly meeting, I believe, virtually on March 11th at 4:00 PM, and the library advisory board is scheduled to meet March 15th at 4:30 PM in the museum community room. The next city council regular meeting will be at 6:00 PM on March 16th, approximately 6:00 PM at the wastewater, or the water treatment plant. The council and staff will meet here at city hall at 4:15 PM, travel to the water treatment plant for a tour, and then the meeting to follow on that site. And then the next thing on the calendar is the annual budget retreat on March 20th, Saturday, from 10 to 3. Oh, and we're looking for several members for the city planning commission again. Encourage applications. You can get them at my office or on the website.
Nothing else coming before this council? This meeting is adjourned.
And reminder, I'm looking for surveys still. I've gotten a couple of them, but many of you have not provided me with your survey document. I just would hate to send, would hate to send Jill after you.